So I'm going to ask Sergeant Bill to come forward. He's got some comments to make.
We can't fit them on that strip of grass on the courthouse side. My request would be just like it was.
Okay, thank you, sir. Chief, you want to proceed with your request then?
I think you did a pretty good job. Request from Cass County Flicker, August 24th to that beginning of real estate sale. We were just street block went blocked off Pearl Street. Let's intend as well as independent. It has no problem. It's happening another time. It went really well. We'll wrap it in a little bit. Any questions?
The only question I would have, Chief, is the fact that, but on Monday, any issues with the last time it happened? Because I don't recall the last time it happened when we've blocked that part of the street off on the square.
There's just a few businesses there. I think they were aware of that was coming. No concerns or complaints coming in. And we just had to walk over there for a little bit. It was not a problem.
I think as long as they're notified, I wouldn't have a problem with it, so.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve, second.
A motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Dorhoff, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Have a good sale.
Thank you.
All right, Council Bill forty.
Council Bill forty is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri approving the reappointment of Vanessa Hargrave to the Park Board.
Vanessa was unable to be with us this evening, but she has requested to be reappointed to the Park Board. So I bring that request to you for your approval. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Turner. May I have roll call, please?
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Zerring?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Mills is absent.
Thank you. Council Bill forty becomes Resolution R. zero-two-four. Council Bill forty-one.
Council Bill forty-one is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri approving the reappointment of David Atkinson to the Park Board.
And likewise, Mr. Atkinson has requested reappointment to the Park Board. So I bring that recommendation to you. And entertain a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second. I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Milner. May I have roll call, please?
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Zerring?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Mills is absent.
Thank you. Council Bill forty-one becomes Resolution R. zero-two-five. Council Bill forty-two.
Council Bill forty-two is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri approving the reappointment of Kathy Ferris to the Park Board.
And likewise, this is a reappointment. Kathy's been on the Park Board for quite some time and has requested reappointment. So I bring her reappointment to you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Zerring with a second from Alderman Turner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Zerring?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Mills is absent.
Thank you. Council Bill forty-two becomes Resolution R. zero-two-six. Council Bill forty-three.
Council Bill forty-three is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri approving the appointment of Jennifer Love as an alternate member of the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
So Jennifer is in the room. She's there in the front row waving at us. This is actually a new appointment, and this would be an appointment as an alternate to the Board of Zoning Adjustments. Mr. Crowe has asked me repeatedly to appoint a couple of alternates because oftentimes they don't have a quorum. And if they don't have a quorum, they can't do the work of the city. So Jennifer has graciously agreed to fulfill that alternate, that second alternate position. And she is with us this evening, so I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Franklin. Roll call, please.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Zerring?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Mills is absent.
Thank you. Council Bill forty-three is approved and becomes Resolution R. zero-two-seven. Council Bill forty-four.
Council Bill forty-four is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri approving the appointment of, I'm sorry, of Aldermen, approving the request from Andre Gibson to keep chickens at 610 Younger Drive.
Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board. Before you tonight is a request from the resident at 610 Younger Drive to keep chickens in his backyard. In your packet, you would have also seen the ordinance, his requests, some permission letters from all of his bordering neighbors as required by the ordinance, and kind of his outline of what would go on there. There was some confusion about this matter last week with getting the right permission from the right property owners. We ended up getting all that. It worked out. He had something incorrectly labeled, so we were able to get that properly labeled and confirm permission from each of those addresses in writing. What he's trying to do, he's got in his home right now five chicks that I believe that he got out at Family Center that are under heat lamp. He basically is just wanting to make sure that once those mature into hens, he's able to move them into his backyard and already has permission from the Board to do that. He is potentially considering adding one more for a total of six, but currently only owns five. Staff recommend approval. Also in your packet, you would have seen one of the more recent times that we had approved a similar request. Any questions?
Is Mr. Gibson here?
Mr. Gibson is not here.
Okay.
He works on Monday evenings, so he's not able to be here.
Okay. Questions of the Board?
Madam Mayor, I got a question.
Yes, Mr. Zerring?
So I read the packet. I think he's met all the questions I've had. My big concern isn't even addressed that, I think, in the packet there is that if there are neighbors that do complain, that he's agreeable that he will remove them out of there. And I believe that was in the packet, correct? If there are complaints in the future, say somebody sells a house, somebody else moves in, and they don't want chickens next door to them?
Yeah, I'm not sure the exact language of the ordinance, but I do believe that is within the ordinance. Essentially, he'd bring that back to us. And we would work through. If the complaint is something that can be addressed, then that's fine. Again, I would need to refresh myself on the exact language of the ordinance for that situation, but I believe it is covered in there.
Okay.
Any other questions of the Board? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Zerring with a second from Alderman Davidson. Roll call, please.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Zerring?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Mills is absen.
Thank you. Council Bill forty-four is approved and becomes Resolution R. zero-two-eight. Council Bill forty-five.
Council Bill forty-five is an ordinance calling a general election in the City of Harrisville, Missouri for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of said city the question of whether to impose a public safety sales tax of one-half of one percent for providing revenues for the operation of Harrisville Emergency Services. First reading of Council Bill forty-five.
Mr. Ratliff?
Mayor and Board, you all recall from the goals that was set earlier this year. One of the goals was to come up with a solution for the shortfall in funding for EMS. Outline in the staff report is since 2015, the several hundreds of thousands of dollars that every year that the EMS fund is in the negative. What the Board has always done in the past is utilize the general fund reserves to make sure to right that ship with EMS fund. And if you recall also in the packet, the trajectory that Ben Hart provided, that over the next five years, we'll see that the reserves of the general fund continue to deplete. And over a ten-year period, the general fund reserve would be gone to be able to fund the EMS services. So we looked at, with staff, all of the opportunities that we could look at to be able to either generate revenue, cut expenses, to be able to do that. The most palatable approach was the sales tax. As you know, we have a lot of different people. Mr. Mullen Dorpeer tonight talking about 125 people that come into town. A lot of people that wouldn't be from the City of Harrisonville, could be from another county or up in Kansas City, has a heart attack. Our EMS services are providing services for that. So they, everyone that would be coming into town, of course, a lot of times either getting something to eat or buying something. And so that sales tax could be utilized and not just put on the backs of the Harrisonville residents to have an opportunity to meet that fund. And that half cent would generate a little over $700,000 a year. Of course, as we continue to add retail, that number would climb to be able to meet the demands of the EMS services. And as a result of that opportunity with August being a ballot issue, we could put it on the August ballot. One of the reasons that staff had suggested August is that you would know the outcome of that, and that would be right as we're getting ready to do budget and to be able to prepare the next year's budget with that anticipation for those dollars. So that's what's before you tonight essentially is to put this on the August ballot to allow the residents to vote on that. As you know, the city itself, as far as staff, and the city cannot promote voting for or against anything. The city can promote the information and what it would do. You as elected officials can ask people to support something. We just can't utilize tax dollars in any type of way to promote or to try to deny any type of ballot issue. So with that, I know we went over it pretty extensively in the last work session, and you all had asked staff to bring this for you tonight. This would need the double meeting tonight because this needs to get in by May the 25th to be on the August ballot. With that, Madam Mayor, if there's any other questions, be glad to answer.
Correct. We discussed this in great detail in our last meeting. Does the Board have any questions?
I, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
I know the city can't advertise to vote yes, but the city can definitely put the information out like we talked about last time to make sure that the statistical data that we've got in the charts and the graphs, again, I feel like it's just the very most important thing we do is get the correct information out there so that they can see it. And I mean, people can make the decision for themselves. They, we can't continue on the path we are and still provide emergency services at this point, so.
Mr. Ratliff?
One of the things, we talked about that on staff level, and Daniel's going to create a page within the website that will have all the data and information that you see here tonight and the information of the slides that you had as well. Any other questions that may come up? We will put that in a central location on the website. Of course, we will put that out in the newsletters as well to make sure people have that opportunity. But we also want to make sure digitally that it's out there in the public domain for anybody to review, so.
And can we put an ad in the paper? Can the city put an ad in the paper? Or would that have to be done privately?
All we can say is vote.
Yeah, but as long, I mean, put the information. We want to make sure the information.
Yeah, we can put the information.
Absolutely.
You know, your point is well taken. It comes down to educating the voters and making sure they have the correct factual information. Because this is critical, this isn't decision-making for the city. We can't continue on as we have been, so thank you for that point. Alderman Davidson, you're leaning in like you have something to say.
I do, and my apologies for unable to being, being able, able to connect last week or two weeks ago. So the only question I would have, and maybe it's something that I think we could utilize, it's, if it's a public safety sales tax, it can be used across the board for public safety. Is that not correct? So therefore, fire EMS?
I'm going to let Council respond to you.
We can use it for fire EMS. We cannot use it for police or other public safety. But it's a, it's actually under the Fire District statute, and so it is for fire emergency response services that are fire and ambulance.
Okay, okay. I'm glad I asked because I, the way I was reading it, I was thinking public service, public safety would be across the board, so.
Okay, Board, this is an ordinance.
I make a motion to suspend the rule on Council Bill forty-five and move it to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Zerring with a second from Alderman Dorhoff to suspend the rule on Council Bill forty-five and advance it to a second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Zerring?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Mills is absent.
Thank you. Second reading.
Council Bill forty-five is an ordinance calling an election in the City of Harrisville, Missouri for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of said city the question of whether to impose a public safety tax of one-half of one percent for providing revenues for the operation of Harrisville Emergency Services. Second reading of Council Bill zero-four-five.
And roll call, please.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Zerring?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Mills is absent.
Thank you. Council Bill forty-five is approved and becomes ordinance three-five-four-three. Next up is the hearing regarding the performance of municipal waste services. Mr. Moore, good evening. So tonight, the Board is interested that you would hear from them, and they are interested in hearing from you. I think we all know that the city has received multiple complaints about municipal waste services, and all of us sitting up here have received complaints as well. Those are missed pickups, or no pickups, picking up on one side of the street but not the other, hydraulic oil being left on the street, broken dumpsters or broken lids, replacement dumpsters being promised but not received, calls not returned, mailbox being full. Those are some of the ones that we've heard. I don't know, Board, if you've heard others other than what I mentioned. Alderman Zerring?
I have, Madam Mayor. Quite a bit, and I've witnessed it myself as well. I dug into this when it first started. I started receiving a lot of complaints, and that is dumping recycle into trash, dumping yard waste in with recycle, basically just picking everything up, putting it in with the waste. Come back with the, I guess the excuse for doing that was, well, they check the recycle. If it's soiled, they just throw it in the trash. And I'm sure that that's what it's meant to be, but that's not what I witnessed. And I witnessed it every pickup day because I work from home, and I'm sitting there when they pull up. And I can tell you, just as late as, not this last pickup, but the pickup before that, that's exactly what happened. Yard waste was being thrown in with recycle. And again, it's just something that's continued to happen.
Other Aldermen that have received complaints? Alderman Franklin?
I have also witnessed coming by after a trash truck has gone by and trash bins are left in the street. Sometimes they have been left blocking driveways. I myself have had to come home and take mine and get it not completely out in the middle of the street, but close to it, and put it back on the sidewalk. Some people have even had, in some cases, their trash knocked over, and it's just left there. It's not been picked up when the bins are picked up as well. So those are some of the complaints that I have had on numerous occasions.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Yeah, the bulk of the complaints that I get are, you know, where trash isn't picked up until 8:30 at night, and they've had their trash containers out the night before. You know, happens to be a windy day. Everybody's trash is blowing all over the city. That's, that's a lot of the complaints I get. And then the hydraulic fluid pouring in the streets and just the maintenance of the vehicles. And you can hear them from three or four blocks away. That's pretty much a lot of the complaints that I get.
And still staying on this side of the room, Alderman Reese?
Well, I have received several complaints as well, but you've pretty much covered them. The only thing that I've seen that's any different at all is one of the young men, when he emptied the trash and he put the, put the container back, he threw it so hard it bounced up over the curb and into my yard. And while that didn't hurt me any at all, I don't think it was very good for the trash container, so.
And now moving to this side, Alderman Davidson?
Pretty much everything we've already talked about. I think that probably one of the biggest complaints that I would be able to state is the fact that when you've got new people that are moving into or build houses, and they have to wait a month for a trash container, so I think that's, what are they, what are they supposed to do with the trash? So I think that would be something that would add to the rest of the list of things that I think when somebody makes contact, we've got to have trash. We've got to have trash pickup, and you can't wait a month to deliver the trash bins. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Turner?
I pretty much received kind of the same complaints and stuff. Even for us, our trash pickup, trash late at night, you know, seven, eight o'clock. Recycle is always the next day, never the same day. Recycle a lot of time is the next day. Today, they were both picked up. I come from work. I believe I, I believe you were driving a truck. I passed him, like, oh, there's, so. But yeah, but today was first day that both of them were picked up. Normal time on the same day.
Thank you. Alderman Milner?
Everybody's pretty much already hit on everything.
Mr. Ratliff, did you have a concern that came to you from Chief Myler about trash at the fire department?
Yeah, the pickup for the dumpster is a lot of times two or three weeks late, and he'll call and doesn't get it picked up, has to call repeatedly. So dumpsters at the fire department.
So Brian, you've kind of heard what the concerns are. I'm going to give you the opportunity to address those.
Well, first and foremost, we've been collecting trash here in Harrisonville now for almost four years. And up until about the last three and a half months, we had very few complaints, if any. Since then, and actually, most of our, most of it has started, and we know this because of tracking our own phone calls. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Thank you.
The, most of our, most of it started when we had the snow and we was delayed one day. The following week, we was delayed two days when we had the bitter, bitter cold, and we had the snows, and we had no place to dump our trash after we collected it. From us tracking our own phone calls, that is the point when we started having the issues, which is also the point when we lost three employees. Okay, let me rephrase that. It was about the point where I let three employees go. Excuse me. Since then, it has been really, really tough to find employees. Super, super tough. And yes, we have been challenged. However, I can speak almost nationwide. I'm not special in that department. There's a lot of people having problems hiring people. I actually, in the last, after Mr. Ratcliffe and I spoke the first time, and Mayor Bowman spoke the first time, I actually did get a driver hired. I couldn't believe it, but I got one hired. He made it almost four days. And after four days of missing entire areas or missing an entire neighborhood, who allegedly had experience, it was at that point I decided he couldn't stay and play anymore. Much as I hated that, that's what happened. Three weeks ago, I hired two more laborers. One laborer made it almost two days and says, I can't do this because of the nature of the job. It's not easy. He couldn't do it, I can't blame him for that. The other guy actually made it two weeks, actually, I thought was going to be a really good hand and was going to make it and do all of us in this room and everybody in this city a very good job. Upon asking him to go take a drug screen, it was at that point he, he informed me that he couldn't. Unfortunately, at that point, I had to let him go. I think everybody understands that. Last week, I reached out to, through networking through other people in this business, and after 30 years of being in this business, I know a lot of people in this business. So after networking over the last several weeks, I found a guy, a driver, whom used to be under me at Town and Country Disposal for years. I reached out to him because he was unemployed as well. His exact words to me, and I quote was, what do you start out at? When I revealed that number to him, his exact words was to me, I make $300 a week more than that sitting at home watching TV. If I could have given him another $300 a week to come to work for me, I can assure you I would. That is part of the problems we're facing. Some of the other issues of mixing yard waste with recycle, everyone up here should have my phone number. And if everyone up here does not have my phone number, I know Daniel has, I know Jeremy has it, and I know Brad has it, please call me directly when that happens. I do not intentionally send three trucks through these neighborhoods every day to pick different items up for the guys to be mixing stuff together. As far as recycling going in with trash, as we have discussed in great length, the recycling market right now is in the tank. I've sent many, many pictures of sheet rock, coats, shirts, shoes, dirty diapers, you name it. That's what we get in recycling, as well as all the reci, not all, a majority of the recycling being put in plastic bags. They do not take recycling that's put in plastic bags. The last two times we've taken a load locally to dump instead of up north to dump, our guys was held there for over 20 minutes while they drug the load out across the entire floor to see how many plastic bags was in there to make sure there wasn't anything else inside that recycling. So to your point, there was no yard waste in that load, and I'm not telling you that that didn't happen because it may or may not have happened. Whether it did or whether it didn't, I want to make sure I know about that because that's not what we do. Otherwise, I quit paying three trucks a day to drive through the town, and when I could send one truck through town, I'd do the same thing. As far as hydraulic oil, anytime that we know that we've left it, we have done anything and everything we can to make sure we get it cleaned up. It was just two weeks ago, we blown a hydraulic hose right out here on Pearl Street, just down the road from Ms. Reese. And I personally, myself, dumped over four bags of oil dry on top of that. We had another truck that was leaking that the driver did not inform us was leaking, and it was not brought to my attention. And once it was, that truck was taken off the street until that truck was fixed. I think that, I'm trying to remember all of them, there were so many, there was, I think that's the majority of those. As far as moving forward, as you, Alderman Turner said, we are changing the way that we're doing things. After our meeting with Ms. Bowman and Mr. Ratcliffe, the following week, we was still challenged. The following week after that, we had an incredibly good week. The following week after that is when we had a couple of truck breakdowns. The other problem with breakdowns is trying to get parts for vehicles, not my trash trucks, even my personal vehicles. The gentleman who I do business with in Harrisonville, Merle Bohannon, cannot even get oil in fuel filters and air filters, and he's a parts house. And he is having problems getting parts as well. Parts that I buy from him to put on our trucks. That is another challenge that we have. We had a truck with a broken leaf spring. I can't drive that safely up and down the vehicles, up, up and down the roadways. Therefore, that truck was taken out of business, so therefore, we was down our truck. It took almost three and a half weeks to get a set of leaf springs delivered from Tennessee. I probably should have volunteered to drive and get it myself. As I did this last weekend, I drove to Arkansas to pick up parts for another truck to pick, to fix myself on Sunday. That is another one of the struggles that we have. Moving forward, as we have tried to be doing, we are changing completely the way that we're doing things. doing things. Just so everybody is aware of it, every truck that we have will start in the city of Harrisonville every morning. When the city of Harrisonville is done, they will move on to their next task. The only problem with that, that I see moving forward is, is because of our inconsistencies and our defaults, that people is not going to be prepared for us. I've reached out to Daniel on more than one occasion and told him that the guys are driving down the streets and we're, we're seeing a lot of people without trash out, without recycling out, or without anything out. And we've even taken pictures of three quarters of a block or an entire block where there was, you could see through the whole street, there was one trash can sitting out. And that was it. Part of that is our fault. And I'll take the full load for that. But moving forward, we have to do better at what we was doing and then what we implemented the last part of last week, that I think Mr. Turner, you seen today, everything will start getting picked up when it's supposed to get picked up. That is my biggest concern. Because I do not like leaving stuff laying on the ground. Period. Whether it's Monday stuff that was a little bit left over from, or Tuesday, a little bit of stuff left over from Monday that we had to pick up. And I've heard people say, well, it was only 20 or 30 minutes. I don't care if it was 20 minutes or two minutes. If it's supposed to be picked up on Monday, I want it picked up on Monday and I want it picked up in a timely fashion. As I think we've seen today, and I think we're going to see tomorrow and moving forward, everything's going to be picked up in a timely fashion, barring certain instances that we can't foresee and we can't overcome. And those are going to happen. But moving forward, and it started, actually started one day last week, Thursday is when we started it. Moving forward, as you seen today, things are put back where they're supposed to be and everything is collected. Granted, the recycling guy's still out working. I was his helper this evening and I had a previous engagement I had to come to, so. He's still out there working. He didn't have any choices, mother told him he had to, so he's still doing it, so. But moving forward, no, things has not been great. Things have definitely not been the way I want them. And there are several new faces up here since we started, Alderman Milner was here and, and Turner was here and Ms. Reese was here. When we first started this, that's the way that it needs to go back to. To where there's very few, if any, phone calls. And if we do get a phone call, my trash was missed. You're never going to get rid of those phone calls. I wish I could sit here and tell you today or anybody else, I can give you 15 more competitors come up here and stand behind me, I wish I could tell you that nobody's ever going to call you and say, my trash was missed, because that is never going to happen. I've been doing this for over 30 years. And in the last 30 years, that is the battle we're always going to have. Was it missed or did you have it out before I got there? I even called to check on a member of this board one time because their trash wasn't out to make sure we wasn't, we actually was earlier than we have been being. I actually called to check on that. Only because I know where she's lived for a lot of years, since she was like a fifth grade science teacher or something like that. So, moving forward, that's the direction we're going. And I hope that all the residents, not just you folks, but all the residents notice that today and they notice that tomorrow and from here on out. That is the best way that we've seen, and I did not make this decision myself. All of my guys, we all sat down together and we decided, how do we fix this since we can't find the people that we need to put in the trucks that we have setting that we can't use? We don't have throwers and we, and we need another driver. As I expressed to the mayor and to Mr. Ratcliffe, we are trying our best to try to find another driver. They're just not out there. I wish there was. One of my biggest competitors has every supervisor and the operations manager in a truck every day. The general manager, I'm being told, will most likely be in a truck tomorrow. It's not just us. I'm not making excuses, please don't think that, because that's not what's happening. It, it, it is everywhere. Luckily, we're small enough and between all of us putting our heads together, they wanted to try this. So I says, let's try it. As it turns out, it worked very well today. It actually worked very well last Friday. And it worked very well today. And that is the way we're going to continue to do it moving forward. Every truck that we have a body for will start in the city of Harrisonville. Generally, there's going to be one guy doing recycling and there's going to be one guy doing the yard waste for what little bit there is out there, which is very little right now. And the other guy will start on trash. Typically, within about an hour and a half of each day's business, the yard waste guy, when he gets rid of his, whatever he has on, will be back to help the trash guy. In most cases, I don't foresee anybody being left on the street in the city of Harrisonville past 3:00 or 3:30 moving forward. Back to the way, maybe even sooner than what it was when we first started. Today was actually, I, I, I was actually shocked that the trash was off, the trash itself was off the street today at about 3:35. I was actually shocked that the guys was able to get it done that quick. Yes, I had a hand in that, you're correct. I'm old and I don't move as good as I used to, so the other guys are the ones that did that. The recycling, as I said, was on schedule to be done somewhere between 5:00 and 5:30-ish. However, we lost the truck due to me not being there to help. So should he be done, he should be awful, awful close to being done, I would say by now. If not, very soon. And the only reason for that is because he's the guy that did the yard waste, it was a little more yard waste he had to leave. He was, it took him two and a half hours to do that, he had to go dump and then turn around and come back and start that. That was the only reason for that. My concern was Monday is the biggest day. There's about 1,150, 1,200 customers on the Monday route alone. That is a lot of trash. There's between 18 and 20 tons of trash that they pick up everybody. That was my biggest concern, it was to get that off the street. Before that ended up everywhere. With the rain and the winds and any storms that may or may not come about. Not that recycling is any less important. However, looking back, a lot of the recycling is put in plastic bags. Which is technically not recycling, but that's where most of it is. So yes, some of my guys, when they open up or they see plastic bags hanging out of a recycling cart, when they see those trash bags hanging out of a recycling cart, they're going to put, they've been told not to, but it's a habit, they're going to throw the trash bags in with the trash. And that is a bunch. And we can continue to forward pictures if we need to, of what is exactly in the recycling. And I'm going to go out on a limb and say, of the 3,340 something customers, residents in the city of Harrisonville that we pick up, I'm going to say maybe 18 to 20% of that is really good recycling. Add another 6 to 8 to 10%, maybe, they don't even participate in recycling. And then the rest of that, unfortunately, a lot of the residents use it as another trash can for theirself. Which is unfortunate. However, the recycling market right now, they only take three or four or five items anyway, the rest of it goes in their own landfill, so. Or they pay somebody to haul that as they consider trash off. This I do know, if it's in a plastic bag, it goes right straight to the trash. It don't make any difference if it's 100% aluminum. If it's in a trash bag, it goes right straight to the trash. That's where it goes. As a fact, they publicly admitted that on Channel 5 here about eight months ago.
Brian, could I ask about the dumpsters? Either the broken dumpsters, broken lids, dumpsters not being replaced when they've been promised, dumpsters not being provided to new homes? Can you address the dumpster issue?
One of the new homes that is most recent in the back of my mind, our guys went to deliver carts to them and they had three carts sitting out there. Now keep in mind, my youngest son is the one who delivered those. He understands that that name on the side of the truck and the name on the side of that cart is his the same as mine. I did not know this, that he did not deliver them a cart until two or three weeks later when it, the message finally got to me and I don't remember how, maybe it was Daniel who got it to me. They already had three trash cans out there, there's a reason why he did not leave them another one. As far as broken lids and things is concerned, we have our list that we have compiled that, from residents who's called us. And every week, at least one day a week, most of the time it's on Saturday. We, we go out and we work on those, whether it's replace a wheel. Some people think, I need a brand new trash can because my wheel fell off. When in all essence, what we do is we lay it down, we slide the axle through it and we slap the wheel on the other side of it and make sure it's locked in place and then we set it back up. And then sometimes we even get that same customer who calls us back and says, you didn't give me a new trash can. Well, I, I wouldn't give you a new trash can if all I had to do was snap the wheel on it because the wheel come unlocked, for whatever reason. As far as lids being broken, yes, we actually replaced over 32 lids last Saturday. That takes a little bit of time. There's eight screws they got to take out and yes, I, we have a battery powered one, but you still have to take eight screws out, try not to lose the eight screws before you put the new lid back on and snap the saddle back on and put the eight screws back in. So yes, we are moving towards those. Replacing some and as far as new builds is concerned, new builds of people who does not have a trash can, don't take this out of context, but those people are more important to me, making sure they have something to put their trash in, as opposed to somebody who doesn't have a lid on theirs. I understand you don't have a lid on it, believe me. The last two or three days, you know how much money I've spent at the landfill for water? It's a bunch. I don't like it any better than anybody else does. Because it affects me and my pocketbook way more than it does, I don't have a lid on my trash can. I've also found five myself that was busted, that we replaced. I've never heard anything from anybody with the city, nor had they ever called me on it. But me being forced to be out and run a truck every day because we can't find a driver, two drivers, excuse me, wanted to replace me and wanted to fill the other truck, I'm forced to go out and do this too. When I find those, I usually take care of those as quick as humanly possible. As quick as humanly possible. Some of the challenges that we've had has delayed that whole process before. To me, the number one thing we have to do is, we have to get everybody's items collected and gone first. If it takes us till 8 o'clock, 7 o'clock to get everybody's items collected and gone, that leaves us very little time to go replace a trash can, put a lid back on it, snap a wheel back on it, or whatever the case may be. And I apologize, we're not making that second or third or fourth down the line, but the number one thing is to make sure that the items that's set on the street is collected first. And then, yes, we do, I can assure you, work, actually my youngest son was out most of the day Sunday doing that as well.
Board, anyone else with questions for Mr. Moore? Alderman Zaring? Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Turner?
I'd say, everyone's, me and wife will go for a walk or whatever and I walk down the street and there's a trash can, the wheel's off. I took, I laid it down, I popped the wheel on. I put on and smacked it. Sorry, maybe, made that lady happy, you know? But there's some other trash can neighborhood, maybe like had a new driver or something that really squeezed the crap out of them, you know, and bust them all up, break them. I mean, I've noticed several like that and I'm assuming that would be a new driver in a hurry and, and squeeze the arms or...
It, it could be, but, but however, all of the carts in, in, in the city of Harrisonville and the city of Archie is kind of unique. And here's why you guys are unique, because I only bought these carts from them because I can assure you, they are probably some of the best carts ever built. Number two, they come with a 12-year warranty. So any of those that's busted like that, I have, I, some of them, yes, we just throw in the back of the truck.
Right.
Okay? It's $47 out of my pocket I'm never going to get back. But what we prefer to happen and what slows part of the process down is, I have to have a picture of that car where it's busted at, if they're busted. Now, wheel falling off didn't count.
Right.
But if they're truly busted, I have to have a picture of that cart and I have to have the serial number that's written across the front of it. I can send that picture along with the serial number back and we get that cart replaced, which at the end of the day is what we want.
Other questions? Alderman Reese?
I don't have a question, but you were referring to the day that you called and asked, and I know it was you asking about my, no, that's okay, that's okay. It is okay. But you had called and asked because I didn't have any trash out. And I'm assuming that that's the day that you looked down the street and saw that there were a whole bunch of them running out.
There was a bunch, yes.
Well, the reason for that was because the week before, you, you collect mine on a Thursday. The week before, Thursday was not collected, so everybody left them out. Had a kind of a little group, I probably got 10 calls that day. I said, leave it out, they will come and pick it up. Friday came, I said, leave it out. Saturday and Sunday came, I said, leave it out. Monday came and they came and picked it up. So on Monday, after they picked it up, everybody put their trash containers back. And so when it came to Thursday, nobody had a full trash container and nobody put it out again.
That's, that's...
And that's the reason you had a whole street full of none. So when Daniel called me and asked me why I didn't put my, my trash container out, I kept thinking, why didn't I put my trash? Well, because I didn't have any trash in it. And neither did anybody else up and down that street, so that was the problem.
Well, and that could be, and like I said, part of, part of these issues that we have is self-induced by us. And I, and I take full responsibility for all that. I, I, I'd like to blame it on the guys who's actually out doing it and they're part to blame, but I'm the one that owns the joint and I'm the one standing here in front of you guys, so.
And I just didn't want my constituents blamed for not putting their trash out.
Sure, sure. No, 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 no. It wasn't that, it was just that when we go through neighborhoods in a certain part, on 4th of July, I think I even made a post on Facebook, we drove four blocks and there was nothing out for four blocks. So when, when, especially when I'm doing it and I see, you figure if there's a thousand homes on each route, between 6 and 8% of everybody is not, of those 1,000 people are not going to have trash out. And I can prove it to any of you any day of the week. Come and ride with me and, and I can show you, between 6 and 8% every day is not going to have anything out. When we come to a situation like that, where there is, I mean, a lot of people, 10 or 15, whatever people that didn't have anything out, that ring, that, that puts a light bulb off in my head that we need to say something to somebody and actually that same day, I don't know if you noticed or not, but there was actually three trucks that drove up and down there just to make sure people hadn't set stuff out a little bit later to make sure we tried to get it.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Zaring?
Yeah, so just a couple of other things I wanted to add here. One, I agree with you, you guys were providing a great service before. That was part of the reason, one of the first things, first couple of meetings that I voted for was an extension, I believe, for the contract for you guys. And the reason was because I knew it was good. But you mentioned that this all started about three months ago. And in all actuality, I know I got my first call probably at the end of September, very first of October. And I know that because then I had to get smart on how the trash was and, and I'm not going to call you directly, I will always go through the city administrator. One, that way he can track it and...
Sure.
Two, he can, he can do that. But I'll tell you, I got to a point to where I just didn't report them anymore. Just like the one a couple of weeks ago, I mean, why report it? Because it, it's not changing. But it has been a lot longer than three months and it's, again, the first I've got, like I said, I've got pictures and video as well, because when I'm trying to learn, first complaint I got, I sent to the city administrator, he gets back with me with, like I said, well, some of the, you know, we look and see if it's soiled, the recycle's soiled, then we throw it away. And that's just not the case that's happening. And it's, because they're not even looking, they're not opening the lid or anything, they're just throwing it up in there. Same way with throwing yard waste and all of that, there's no thought process that would go into that, that I could see. And again, I've got videos, I've got pictures to do it, just because, another one I think was, well, we got a truck that's split and one side's recycle, one side's trash. But you don't have one of those.
No. That never come from us, because we do not have one of those. I don't know where that come from, that, that did not come from us.
I, I don't know, all I know is that was what I got as one of the excuses why it's happening. And that's what really kind of motivated me to really, I'm not the guy that's taking pictures and videos to get somebody hung up, but I've got to answer to somebody...
Sure.
...that's telling me this and I want to be smart and knowledgeable on it and I don't want to, because I, I guarantee you, had I witnessed it the other way, I'd have had a conversation with that citizen telling them, this is the way it is. So, again, I agree, you guys did a great job before, put it in the extension, but it has been a lot longer than three months that we've been dealing with this problem.
I just noticed that our phone calls has increased since that time. We always, we would always get X amount of phone calls per week. But the major influx in those phone calls, that's about when that started, maybe a week or two before that, but that's when we noticed from... or two before that, but that's when we notice from our phone log, of when those phone calls started really going through the roof.
Brian, one of the things that Mr. Ratliff and I talked with you about when we met with you on the thirtieth of March, was encouraging you to utilize Facebook more. And to communicate with citizens if you were gonna have a route change, or if you were late, or, you know, whatever. I've not seen very many posts on Facebook from you to communicate with citizens, and in Harrisonville, that's, that's the way to get the word out. And so, I was disappointed when I didn't see more Facebook posts come from you, because I felt like that was one of the requests that we had made, was more communication with folks. And as you're talking about going forward, and I've heard you use the phrase, "in the future," and your commitment to wanting to do things better and wanting to do things differently, I would graciously insist that you utilize Facebook to communicate with the people in our city. Okay? All right, let's wind this down. Alderman Davidson?
Well, you kind of beat me to the punch. I'm not a big Facebook person, but I am a communication person. And the only way you can solve problems is through communications.
Sure.
And you mentioned something about how, moving forward, if you're, if you continue to move forward and do things like you did today, you need to communicate that with you, with the public. Because I can assure you, my trash won't be out there at seven o'clock in the morning if you come by, because it's usually five, six, seven o'clock at night.
Sure.
So if that, if that is the case, you're gonna need to communicate that with the public. Because it's gotten to the point where, it's not the cry wolf, but you cry wolf so many times, you just
Sure.
Forget it. So, I totally echo what the mayor said, Facebook is a big thing in the city. It's, you've got, you've got to communicate those, that information with the public, so that way they'll know and be aware of it, or you're gonna be coming back and getting the calls, well, you didn't pick up our trash because it got out at eight o'clock. And I agree with Alderman Zaring. It did start before then, there was a lot of, had a lot of complaints about the hydraulic fluid, a lot of, a lot of complaints about that, and the trash cans not ending up back where they're supposed to be in the middle of the roads. So, I encourage you to echo today, and if there was a day last week, I don't know, I wouldn't know about it, but today was our trash day, I would consider you, or suggest you echo those two days for you to be able to continue.
Yep.
Alderman Reese?
Just a quick one, this is just a suggestion, but when you do that internet thing, and you tell them it's gonna be a little bit later or something, use that to educate your public. Use that to say, the reason we're not doing this recycle is because, and I know that there are, I mean, I have a thing taped up by my recycle, and I have to check it every once in a while to see what's going in there, but I think that a lot of people don't have any idea. And, and even if they heard it once, they need to be reminded. I just put a little thing in that said, you know, guys, this is what we need to do, so...
And we've tried to post a few pictures of some of the things that we found. And I've, I've honored, and I'm like you, I'm not a big Facebook guy. I need to be, but I guess, but I'm not a big Facebook guy.
Well, get your son, he will be. Your kids are. Any other comments? Alderman Turner?
I'd say, I really appreciate seeing you out there driving the truck. I mean, it does show you kind of trying to turn something around, I mean, you're out there doing it too, you're not just sitting back trying to tell everyone else what to do. So I mean, you are trying. West Pitt up today, good. Haven't had any leaks for a while, so that's good. And, I mean, when you first took over, I mean, we improved so dramatic, it's like, oh, wow. But now you're almost like our...
And, and that was part of our downfall, because when we started, it was so good. And now then, when you get to the, maybe not the complete opposite end of that spectrum, but you move way towards the other side of that spectrum, then it's, you know, then it sticks out a lot more. It's like the two or three weeks when, when we didn't pick up because it was so bitterly cold and the snow and stuff, when we made that post on Facebook, there were so many people that says, we don't care, it's just trash. It'll get picked up when it gets picked up, don't worry about it. The safety of your employees is way more important than our trash getting picked up. And there was countless messages like that sent to us.
Right.
But now then, we're on the opposite end of that, so now everything is, you know, naturally just the opposite.
Well, but you communicated that.
Sure.
You let everybody know, everybody, I mean, no one's at the battle, you know, when people don't know you've had a truck breakdown or something
Sure.
Short-handed, I mean, they get a little mad irate quickly, so...
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I just had one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
And I think we can share it as much. You know, people aren't putting stuff out as early as they once did, but the, that doesn't necessarily solve the problem, because if they're getting back on track, then citizens have to be back on track as well.
Sure.
So maybe as well as you putting stuff out there going, we're trying stuff new, we're gonna be there, please have it out at the same time, please watch what you're putting in, maybe we need to pop that back into our, on our website here the next day or two to remind people that things are back, trying to get back to normal, and we need to make sure your trash is out by 7:00 a.m. if that's when it's supposed to be picked up, so...
Now, I can't, I can't promise you that it's always gonna be 7:00 a.m.
No, but still.
But what I can assure you is that what collectively us as a group decided to do was to try it this way.
Yeah.
And it worked really well for us last Friday, and it worked really well for us today. And we're gonna try to make sure that it continues to go that way moving forward, not just Friday, not just today, but moving forward every day. As I said, every truck that we have will be starting in the city of Harrisonville. Everybody.
Okay.
When the city's done, then we'll move on to other things.
Okay. Alderman Dorhoff?
I would just echo the communication side of it. I know personally, I work from home too, and I didn't put the recycle out today, because usually I put out in the morning, but we had, you know, torn down cardboard boxes, and I didn't want them soaking wet all day, and my wife came home and said, they already, they already picked it up. I'm like, well, I was gonna take it out there in about an hour or two. But, you know, the first...
My apologies.
That's okay. The first year and a half or two, you guys did a great job. The last year and a half, not, not so much.
Right.
Okay. I'm gonna ask if there's any other comments from the board. Mr. Moore, thank you. Board, what would you like to do? Decision before you is, what do we do about our waste contract? Alderman Reese?
Do we have to make that decision before we have a chance to discuss it with the board?
Well, this is your chance to discuss it with the board.
This is it, huh?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm kind of leaning towards, I don't mind, you know, he made changes Friday, and it's working Friday, and today, you know, maybe we give it to the next Alderman meeting, and see if it continues to go positively.
So what is your motion?
Guess we'll continue on this course for two weeks and give it a try, and see if it improves and...
Okay, so are you, let me just have clarification here, are you voting to terminate the contract and then reevaluate it in two weeks?
No, you know, I don't know, I'm just sitting here trying to, trying to think.
Okay.
I think that the, that the position that we're in is that we have so many constituents that are so angry, and they are, I mean, they really are. I mean, they steam when they get ahold of us on ten o'clock at night on, on the telephone. And so that's what, I think that's partially what's putting us in such a bad position here.
And not only that, I mean, we can continue to, okay, we've got it good for a couple of days, or a couple of weeks, or maybe for a month, and then we've made our decision, and then we go from there, and it starts going back down again, going back the other way, so... I think there needs to be a decision.
Alderman Davidson?
If I can ask, if I can ask our attorney, can we suggest a termination date in the future, but see how things happen prior to that time, and not, and then that termination not go into effect, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yes. If you want to select a date in the future, and notify the contractor that it's gonna terminate as of this date, but we're gonna schedule a review prior to that date, because you can always revoke the revocation. The contract requires that you provide notice of the revocation, which you could do, but you can always revoke it. So you could decide now to terminate, for example, and then calendar it for an upcoming meeting, and then reconsider, and you could, if things are progressing and you're satisfied, you could revoke the revocation.
Well, and the reason I ask that, and I'll be quite frank with you, Brian, is, is I think communications with you started the end of March. So we were, we're six weeks, six and a half weeks since then, and it took that six and a half weeks to get us where we're at today. You've given a lot of explanations, I'm not gonna call them excuses, because I can understand the explanations you gave. But I have to have assurance, as I think the rest of the members of the board, from the public who we represent, that something's gonna change. And I think sometimes if you don't require something of somebody and an end date with it, that isn't going to change. So, I don't know, that's, that would be something that I'm thinking about. I don't know what the rest of the board, I'd like to hear what the rest of the board has to say, but that's something that I'm, I'm thinking, because if you put a drop dead date there, then that requires them, they've already been on notice, if, if they do Fridays and Mondays like they, the rest of the next six weeks, or whenever a date we put in, then I, I think at that point in time, we can revoke that decision that we made tonight. So that's kind of where I'm looking at.
Alderman Franklin?
Why don't we make a motion to terminate the contract in a date in July, and then revisit this either the first or the second meeting of June? And that will give him apple opportunity, I'm sorry, to possibly correct this, and then we can go from there.
Okay. Alderman Zaring?
I was just gonna put that into an official motion.
If you would do that. I'm sorry, Alderman Turner?
I have a question. Okay, so let's say we pick a date to terminate whatever, we're gonna go back and revoke it, but let's say we don't, and we follow through. How long would it take us to do RFP, to go out and get a new trash service and get them started? I mean, we, you know, you know, catch your head out, you know, terminate this contract, then he quits, and then we don't have no one in place to pick up.
Mr. Ratliff or Mr. Moore?
I mean, that's, I mean, you got time spanned. You answer that one?
The, well, the, the contract, until it's terminated
Right.
Requires him to continue.
Correct.
So if you, obviously if you pick a lead date, then it would be incumbent upon Mr. Ratliff to find a new contractor between then and the lead date. So, don't pick tomorrow.
Okay. What would be a good RFP time for, for that? The lead time would we need? Let's say we, let's say he didn't do what we wanted him to do, and we were gonna go ahead and follow through with it. How long, once we make that decision that we're gonna go ahead and follow through with that termination, how long would we need to get a contract, a contract in place?
You, you usually like to have at least thirty days of, of advertising and getting the bids in, in a thirty-day period, and then a review. So you're, you're at least at six to eight weeks before you get to that point, getting it to the board for a decision.
I would more look like August 1st, it would probably be a date for me, because that way we can make our decision by the end of June, first part of July, and gives us all of July to get the RFP, to be able to do it. Again, I'm telling you, I want you to succeed, but we've also got to answer to those we serve.
Sure.
So, our decision here is for you to succeed, not to fail.
Yep.
Absolutely.
So, Madam Mayor, I move to terminate the contract with municipal waste services on, on August 1st of 2021, and to revisit that at the Alderman meeting, I would say no later than June 21st.
I would second that motion.
So the motion before the board then to terminate the contract with municipal waste effective August 1st, with a review of the performance of municipal waste at the June, what is that date? The June 21st Board of Alderman meeting. So we have a motion from Alderman Franklin, with a second from Alderman Zaring. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Mills is absent.
So, Mr. Moore, thank you. I think you've heard from the board that, you know, it is our desire that you would be successful in your business. But by and large, we have constituents that we have to answer to, and they, they are dissatisfied. So it was incumbent upon us to have this conversation with you.
Sure.
So we thank you for being here, and we'll be back in touch.
Very good.
Good luck, sir.
Madam Mayor, can I say one other thing?
Yes, sir.
I would suggest you come back June 21st.
I will.
And hopefully, you'll be able to give it, give us some good news, and we'll have the ability to see that news. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Brian, I know you started out good, great, I know you can do it, you've had some obstacles, but you'll...
Well, we've all had obstacles, but it will be back to where it's supposed to be. Just didn't happen as quick as I thought it would, that's all.
Good luck, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Alderman, the committee reports. I'll start with Alderman Davidson.
If you'll indulge me for just a little bit, I think you offered the indulgence at last meeting, and I wasn't able to talk.
I did.
And so I'm gonna spend a couple of minutes, and I, I hope, I hope everybody will be happy with what I'm gonna say. On the heels of National, and I'm gonna read this, because that way I'm gonna get it and not say things that I shouldn't say. On the heels of National Law Enforcement Officers, Police Officers Week, I want to humbly recognize and honor the local, local, state, and national law enforcement officers, and emphasize the importance that service that they provide to our citizens. A law enforcement officer career is very dangerous occupation. In the amount of time I'll be talking, it's very possible that at least one officer will be assaulted in the United States, and hopefully that officer will not be one of those that dies in the line of duty, which averages one per day. Assaults average about every seven minutes on a law enforcement officer in the United States. Line of duty deaths in nineteen, or 2020 was 362, and in 2021 currently is 125, so they're on pace to hit the same amount. Harrisonville Officer Chandler Sumner lost his life February 13th, 1991. Patrolman Donald Lee Marler and Patrolman Francis Wirt lost their lives on April 21st, 1972. Cass County Officer, or excuse me, Deputy Kevin Mays lost his life in a pursuit on June 13th, 1995. The Missouri State Highway Patrol, who I was employed with for over thirty-three years, has lost thirty-three officers and one K-9 officer since 1931 was its existence. Eighteen of those officers and one K-9 were killed in the line of duty since I was hired in September of 1985, to include one of my classmates, Sergeant Robert G. Kimberling, who was shot in the line of duty in St. Joe on Interstate 29. It's outrageous when professional athletes, actors, media personalities, and politicians make statements and weigh in on critical incidents without any direct factual knowledge of the situation and without any law enforcement background. It's frustrating and downright reckless. Professional athletes can miss shots, drop passes, and make errant throws. Actors and media personalities can make numerous takes, or make numerous takes and can edit their actions. Media can just retract a story, and politicians can say anything they want and are never held accountable. In fact, none of the aforementioned professions seem to ever be held accountable for any of their statements or actions. Professional athletes have posted names of officers and called into question their actions, which have brought additional danger to the officer and his family. Actors made senseless statements such as just shoot him in the leg. Media personalities have edited video to change the overall facts of an incident, thereby providing inaccurate, false, and biased reporting information of the incident. Politicians have made statements to incite violence in the streets of our country and against our law enforcement officers. And who provides protection for these individuals that I've just spoken with? Yes, armed security and our law enforcement. Yes, armed security and our law enforcement. We live in America and it's not acceptable and it's not what we Americans stand for. Law enforcement officers have to make split second decisions, which does not allow a drop pass, multiple takes and edits and retract, retracts for an errant storyline. They have to be perfect the very first time. They are held to a higher standard and terminated from employment for making false statements. Their split second decisions have to be correct the first time, but their actions are critiqued for days, if not months and years later. And those officers, those officers that make the decision to have to be involved in a critical incident, that decision remains with them for the rest of their life. To point just a few incidents, just yesterday, four officers were shot and injured in Birmingham, Alabama. Two officers were shot in Chicago, Illinois. And just closer to home, Grandview officers were involved in an officer involved shooting where ultimately an armed teenager lost his life. I want our local, local, state and national law enforcement officers to know that I have their backs and I will continue to support them in everything that they do. If not for domestic law enforcement and our United States military, which Alderman Zaring recently retired after 29 years of a long and distinguished career, we would not enjoy and we would not be able to enjoy the freedoms we have today. I will continue to challenge the remainder of this board as, as they have shown before and the citizens of Harrisville, Cass County and the state of Missouri to continue their unwavering support for law enforcement and our U.S. military. I'm going to end with something that is quite ironic. It was written and published in 1970 and it's still, if it's not true, same true, it's even more true. Many in law enforcement have probably heard this, but if you've not been in law enforcement, you may not have. It was a narrative by Paul Harvey and it was the rest of the story. And I'm going to read it if you'll soul indulge me. Policeman, and I'm going to using it, he wrote it when mainly men were policemen, so it's going to be gender towards men, but including men and women when I say this. Policeman, a policeman is compassionate of what all men are, mingling of a saint and sinner, dust and deity. Gold statistics wave the fan over the stinkers, underscore instances of dishonesty and brutality because they are new. What they are really mean is that they are exceptional, unusual and not commonplace. Buried under the frost of the fact, less than one half of 1% of policemen misfit the uniform. That's better average than you'll get among your, your local clergy. What is a policeman made of? He, of all men, is once the most needed and the most unwanted. He's strangely nameless creature who is sir to his face and fuzz to his back. He must be a diplomat that he can settle differences between individuals so they'd each will think he won, but if the policeman is neat, he's conceited. If he's careless, he's a bum. If he's pleasant, he's flirting. If he's not, he's a grouch. He must make an instant decision which would require months of a lawyer to make, but if he hurries, he's careless. If he's deliberate, he's lazy. He must first, be the first to an accident, infallible of his diagnosis and he must get the person breathing and stop bleeding, tie splints and above all, be sure the victim goes home without a limp or expect to be sued. The police officer must know every gun, draw on the run and hit where he doesn't, where it doesn't hurt. He must be able to whip two men twice his size, half his age without damaging his uniform and being without, and without being brutal. If you hit him, he's a coward. If he hits you, he's a bully. A policeman must know everything and not tell. He must know where all sin is and not partake. A policeman must, for the single strand of hair, from the single strand of hair, be able to describe a crime, the weapon and the criminal and tell you where the criminal is hiding. But if he catches the criminal, he's lucky. If he doesn't, he's a dunce. If he's promoted, he was a political pole. If he doesn't, he's a dudgerd. The policeman must chase a bum, a bum lead to a dead end, stake out 10 nights to tag one witness who saw it happen but refused to remember. A policeman is a minister, a social worker, a diplomat, a tough guy and a gentleman. And of course, he must be a genius because he has to do all of this on a policeman's side. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Alderman, for your service. Thank you, Alderman Zaring, for your service. We probably don't say thank you often enough, but thank you, guys. Alderman Turner?
That's a little hard to follow. No, I don't have much. My first meeting this week for Cass County League of Cities, it's Wednesday, and it's been pretty quiet.
Okay, is that all?
Yes.
All right. Alderman Milner?
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Very insightful. Just want to remind everybody, school is out tomorrow. The kids can't wait, let me tell you. They have not been focused for the last
Teachers can't wait either.
Probably can't wait either, but you know, we, we, I don't, I don't know how many people in our community truly realize how blessed we were this year to have been able to be in person, get our children out of their homes and back in a social environment where they can see people on a daily basis. We know they have food. We know that they are safe for those few hours that they are here. It, it is to stay, it is to say the least, it was not without its struggles, but the kids were troopers, the staff were troopers, everybody wore their masks, they, they did what they were asked and tomorrow they get released into the public, so please watch out. Please, when you're driving through the streets, be very careful. Know that they're going to be running and riding and hollering through your neighborhoods because they are glad that the mask requirements are coming off and they can have a normal existence again. So everybody keep your eyes open.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Zaring?
Okay, well, you guys can blame Alderman Davidson for me being long-winded then because he's, he's got me going now, okay? But I would like to thank law enforcement. My son is a police officer, Kansas City, Missouri, police officer. And I'll tell you, my throat's dry. I watched what he had to go through just to get hired. You have to want to do that job. Took a pay cut, took like a year, had a great job to do that. So again, can't thank you guys enough for that. You had what, 34, did you say, 36 years?
Thirty-three and a half.
Thirty-three and a half, okay. Thirty-four years. I mean, that's, that's incredible service. We appreciate that. And I agree with you. We've, we're creating a culture nowadays that police officers are targets. They're not, it's not being taught to be respected that way, that the criminal has, is right and the police officer is always wrong. And it's, it's creeping into every fiber of our community. We're starting to see it here, not necessarily with the police officers, but you know, where somebody can make a claim, make it publicly, use names of somebody that's under an investigation for whatever it may be, just to call attention to that and to themselves without understanding what the consequences of that is. And, and you know, like you said, 29 years of service is what I served. Difference between you and me is I knew who my enemy was. I knew when I was going out, I knew where the bad guys were. And again, just trying to say the right words because I don't want to say anything wrong. But again, we're, we're in a environment now and I agree with you, we need to be vigilant as, as board members, as a city, to be aware of these things that keep creeping in to our small hometown. One of the reasons I like Harrisville is because, you know what, we stand up and still at school, we say to pledge allegiance. But like I said, even there, and, and I'll just tell you, it's disturbing to me and hopefully something's going to happen with that. Similar things happening to our school. Our school district and administration has done great things with, during COVID. I think they were out at the town hall, spoke about all the different things that they had done. And you know, to have an employee of the school district to post on a public Facebook page and use names of a teacher who is guilty or not, we don't know because we don't know what's happening with the investigation. But they would make a statement and use a person's name as if they were already guilty to call attention, to try to get news media down here and to cause chaos really in, in our quiet town. I certainly hope that we start seeing those people that do that dismissed and, and actually reprimanded for what they do that is wrong. Because right or wrong, like I said, 29 years of service, yeah. I served 29 years to protect the right of people to have, to be proven they're innocent until proven guilty. And nowadays, we don't have that. If you're guilty because it's popular and I can become popular by putting it out there and I feel like I'm doing a good thing. And again, right or wrong, I don't know. It just brought me to that situation because a lot of our police are under attack like that. It's, you can't even compare it to Vietnam. That's, that was one thing, you know, I grew up shortly after the Vietnam era, but I, I knew a lot about them and learned a lot about them. When they returned from war, it wasn't a hero's welcome. It was, they were getting spit on, they were called baby killers. It's gone further than that and our military corrected that, they really did to make sure that, and our country did, I think. That's why people are so appreciative now of people that serve in the military. But it's worse than that with police officers because they are a target. It's not, it's not just being spat on, it's not just being called names. It's a target and it's a movement to actually put good people in bad situations and, and do away with them. So again, I appreciate anybody that wants to be a police officer nowadays, wants to be in law enforcement nowadays, wants to be an educator nowadays, I'll be honest with you, my hat's off to you. I had it easy for 29 years compared to what you guys deal with, so. With that, I'll let it go. I would like to say, you know, reading the report, I see a lot of things happening at the airport out there. Again, still see the electric people out all different hours of the day, on the weekends, all that type of stuff. Been out in my place a couple of times, so I always make sure to go out and thank them. So that's all I have, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Davidson, for pointing out and making the points that you made.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Franklin?
Yes, thank you, Gary. We appreciate you bringing it front and center as to the difficulties that, that all the police officers face each and every day of their lives. We thank Chief Hofer for him and his officers as well, under his direction, keeping us safe here in Harrisville and hopefully that continues with no incidents. I also wanted to thank Daniel for keeping all of us straight on the fix-it program and keeping everyone answered and, which I know is probably difficult at best at times. I would also like to say that last Tuesday, we had our park board meeting and Grant has taken bids for the pool and hopefully we will be coming to a decision as to who the contractor will be and get that underway as soon as we can. He also mentioned in the meeting that our, all of the physical workout training equipment is, has all been bid on. It is on West Central Auction and so hopefully we'll get some good monies coming in. And the carpeting and everything, I believe, is slated for June to start in there and then we are, they are also going to be putting the equipment in in the month of July. It'll be done in stages, so not everything will be coming to a screeching halt as far as if you want to go in and work out and so forth. So anyway, I believe that's all I have today.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
So Grant, when I was out there Saturday for volleyball, so the track upstairs is not, no longer accessible for walking, is that correct or can they go in the back?
You can get it from the stairwell.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Somebody asked me that and I just wasn't sure, so I didn't tell, I didn't say anything.
The elevator is closed, but you can access it from the stairs.
Okay, perfect.
I did have one other one that
Yes, go ahead.
I wanted to, Rodney is gone, but I wanted to thank the street department for doing the wonderful job that they're doing on the streets, the parts that are finished and completed, they are just as smooth as silk. And I have had residents come up and say how nice they, how nice it is, so, or hoping that maybe the rain will move out and we can get back to finishing.
Well, I'm sure Carl would be happy to pass that under the rug. Thank you, Carl. Alderman Reese?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for Grant over there. I've had several people ask me about the senior citizen, about the senior facility, when that will be open again and when the, I guess the food program will start again.
So currently, the food program is, they're delivering meals daily to whoever signs up, I believe that's how they're
Okay, super.
Doing it. They did talk about starting in May, that has since been postponed, kind of like, like the gentleman was talking about today, staffing. So they, they ran into a staffing issue, so they're currently just staying with the, delivering the meals and not opening it up completely yet, so. But I think they're ready to, you know, they're, they're wanting to get back to normalcy just like everyone else, but they want to do it properly.
Okay, so I can just pass the word along, it will be soon?
Yes, soon would be a good answer.
It will be soon. I can do that.
No set date yet, though.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Alderman?
No.
No, okay. Alderman Dorhoff?
Yeah, all I can say is great words from Alderman Davidson and Alderman Zaring. Thank you for your service. Really makes me pretty fearful, the direction that our country is going in with the level of disrespect towards law enforcement, military. You guys literally put your lives on the line for our safety every day that you went to work and I think a lot of that can be attributed to the national media, the way they spin stories and sometimes just flat out lie for a, a narrative that they want to put out there. So just thank you for everything you guys have done and hope the police, law enforcement, military get the respect that they deserve.
Thank you. City Administrator Report?
Yes, ma'am. Echo what was said about our policeman. It's a very important role, very dangerous role. It's sad to see, I remember not too long ago where it was a lot of people that would apply to open positions and, and want to be a policeman and now it's so hard to get people to sign up because of the politicization of a, a good service to a community, so. But I appreciate those that have served as well. The Household Hazardous Waste Event, May 22nd. Employee Recognition Dinner is May 26th at the Community Center. Alderman Zaring gave some indication about the airport. MODAD finally replaced the automated weather observing system, visibility and presented weather sensor and it's working great. The light out there has went out again. We talked about it in staff meeting that it keeps going out sooner than it should, so there's something else that's going on and we do not serve that electric out in that area, so we are talking to the electric group to see if there's a surge problem going on that's, that's causing issue with that light continually going out. The 2020 Consumer Confidence Report has been distributed to customers. The 2020 curb and sidewalk program by K&amp;J Remodeling is complete except the ensuring of grass being planted along the section of sidewalk on Ann Avenue at Chapel Lane. So if you get questions about that, they do have to get a stand of grass. We hold back a certain amount of the money until that grass has become established and then we will pay them out. That lasts, I think, $500 of the contract, once we have that stand. The 2021 asphalt contractor is not milling on Meadow Drive today. As you know, we've had lots of rain, but it's rescheduled for Tuesday. Additionally, a part of that asphalting on West Wall Street or Hillsdale Drive was postponed due to the rain. However, their construction equipment's out in the right of way. Then the spring citywide cleanup that we had, we had 419 various sizes of loads and refuse, so that was utilized well. And then And then Mark STP has the funds, as you all know, with the ERA money that's coming out. Part of that is through the federal transportation. As you all know, in this area, Mid America Regional Council is the, kind of the clearinghouse for any federal transportation dollars. Missouri is to get 8.9 million. And in the meeting that we had last Tuesday, it was a big discussion among the STP group is how will that be distributed? Do we do additional call for projects, which it takes a long time to go through that process? Is it paying now the projects that have already been funded and then opening up STP monies in 2024 to be able to do that? Or is it just everybody gets a certain amount of maintenance money to be able to do that? But then MoDOT chimed in about all the federal requirements and everything that needs to be met. So a subcommittee has been created to have that discussion, to then bring it back to the STP in the next meeting. I volunteered Harrisonville to be on the subcommittee and, which meant Carl. And so Carl's on the subcommittee that'll be discussing how those dollars to be distributed out. And so that's, it's a good thing either way because, you know, our hope is to make sure that Harrisonville gets something out of it. Even if it is maintenance money, it's better than getting nothing. And we don't have a shortage of need of street issues of maintenance. The Glen Eagle subdivision, the regional detention basin, city staff has written and our attorney is reviewing a memo of understanding between us and District Four regarding the 10-inch main and the new water meter and a permanent easement on the city's 28 acres and the city's intentions to build 11-acre lake and the dam across the western side of the 28 acres. And that within the city limits of Harrisonville and the city's desire to serve all the commercial industrial uses. That's a little different than the Glen Eagle portion of it, but as you all know, District Four is in a lot of the industrial area that we have planned out on the southwest side of town. The ADS is currently being served by District Four, but the city serves the fire suppression to that property. One of the experiences that I've had is you can, if a water district will work with you, is that we get a ahead-of-time agreement that if it's a commercial industrial user, that the city would serve it. If it's residential, they of course would serve it in their boundaries. So we're having discussions with District Four about that. So that way, we can always make sure that, not just fire suppression, but the water that's needed on any future commercial industrial user in that area, that the city can ensure that happening. Jim would like to make sure that that's done as well because anytime we do RFIs and we are talking to companies, you know, you've got days, maybe two or three days to turn around and get information back. And the more that the city has control over that information and ability, the better it is for us to be able to land a respectful company within the city. So we're having that discussion with them as well. And as we move forward with this, staff had a very positive meeting with District Four. Came away from that meeting feeling that it was going very well. And actually, one of their staff members said it was good that the city and them are having communication now and working together. And so that's what we want to promote here at the city, is to, to work with everybody. District Four has their responsibilities, we have ours, but we can work together on a lot of the different issues where we cross-pollinate and, and try to get those things accomplished. We also have the UV project to move in forward. The engineering and construction phase standard form of agreement between the owner and design builder for the Phase Two agreement has been accepted. The contractor engineer's opinion of probable construction, the project was in budget. If you all recall, it's two and a half million dollar budget. That is budgeted for that. And the construction and fees and overall price came in at 1.764 and includes the revised engineering and construction phase services of 199,000. I want to compliment Carl on that. It was a lot higher than that. And Carl told him it was way too high and continued to negotiate with them to get that number down. The more that number goes down, the more capital we can do with those funds. Then the, the anticipated start date has been revised for May 1 of 2021 with the final completion date of January 6 of 2022. So that'll be a good thing to get that accomplished. Lake Luna and the City Lake Project, digital plans have been submitted and reviewed for scheduled, and scheduled for May 18th with the engineer and city staff. And may, or, and they will continue to lower the lake. As you all know, we put the pipe in and got the pipe open to keep the pressure off the dams and the spillways. So far, that's been working to help out with that. But we do get a lot of questions from people of what is that coming up out of the side of the lake there? And we told them it's new spring water. Then we have the 2021 street and curb project, 2,246 linear feet of curb and gutter on Parkwood Drive. And then we have 698 linear feet on Twin, Twin Pines Drive. And then the 2020 asphalt project is being finished up. Hopefully, if the weather permitting, this next week, we'll get that accomplished and get that completed. The electric department is getting ready to start offering security lighting for residents and businesses. So if they contact the electric department, they can get your name and a list of insulation or inquiry. We'll start installing those security lights, similar to what other electric departments do. And that'll be something that we think that would be a good thing for our businesses and our customers to be able to offer. And the electric department is also installing several pools and streetlights from north Walmart entrance to Waters Road in the next coming months. That was something that was agreed to prior, I always say BB before Brad. And once we, Andy got involved with it as well, there was budgeted monies to put additional lighting along that area. And so we're going to get that accomplished and get that moving forward as well. Mentioned earlier with the Park Foundation Golf Tournament, July 23rd. The hospital ribbon cutting is June 8th. And our Parks Department have two booths out there for that event. The duck work cleaning was accomplished. And the equipment for the downstairs, the end of the auction is the 26th of May. The fitness equipment upstairs will start on the 26th of May and end on the 23rd. And then the flooring for the downstairs will start June the 1st and the upstairs will start July the 15th. So by mid-July, there'll be a lot of good improvements out there in the equipment area. Also, staff's met with Cunningham Recreational Review and Playground Equipment for options of playground equipment. It was, it's always funny, Grant comes in after that meeting, he had a meeting with me right after, and the park and rec guys get real excited when they bring in the park and equipment and all the new technology and everything they have. And he was like, look at this. They got a lot of new opportunities out there. Of course, it's always expensive. And, and I remember we, the, I'm a part of the Kiwanis Group and they were wanting to do a project and they talked about parks and the superintendent is there as well. And he said, be careful what you ask for. We're doing three part, three playgrounds right now. It's costing a million dollars. And, and they definitely didn't want to go in that area on anything that they were trying to do. The outdoor pool improvements, that pre-bid meeting was held and the project bids will be on May the 20th. So hopefully we'll have some good news on that. And then staff has completed the first round of the civil plan review for the new Culvers project going on 291. We've been contacted by GNC subcontractors and E&amp;R regarding questions relating to the first round. Staff also passed these concerns on to the prospective city departments. But we're also getting a review for demolition permits to begin that demoing in that, that timeframe. And hopefully we will be, we're expecting them around June. The Aldi Store Project, the final inspection is the first week of June. Their revised opening date, it's June 16th. The weather's not been cooperating for them, so it's June 16th. The DLS Tire Project, 1009 East, Eastern Street is underway and scheduled for completion in mid-June. The city also approved grant agreements for the State Historical Preservation Commission for $20,000 for the Harrisonville Historic Square Preservation Plan. And then staff is finalizing the agreement with Mid America Regional Council to complete a CWG demolition grant application at no cost to the city for the application. And then we're finalizing an agreement with CGI to produce four free videos to the city spotlighting the community. Jim's working with them. How they get it paid for is different businesses that sponsor to do that. It's no cost to the city. We can do community videos, like three minutes, four minutes on a video. Some are in two, three. And they will do something about quality of life video. They also do about different amenities in Harrisonville. And then also, we'll definitely be pointing them to the industrial area and opportunities that we have in the commercial parts of the city. So hoping to get that done this summer and it'd be a good marketing to put out there for the city of Harrisonville. You know, they, they say a picture's worth a thousand words. Well, videos, even more than that. So we're, we're glad to get that accomplished as well. And with that, Madam Mayor, I think that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Ratliff from the members of the board?
And staff will send a letter to Mr. Moore on your decision tonight with the resolution. And put that in writing to him so that everybody's on the same page.
That's good. Questions from the media?
Somebody must be watching, because I actually had Paul just ask, what is the status of the, I mean, misspelled it, but our park up here?
Marlerworth Park?
Marlerworth Park. What's the status on the word there?
It's closed.
It's volunteers that are, yeah.
Grant, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Grant.
So currently, we're, that's a volunteer project that, that we have a citizen who's volunteering his time to go in and put those, that brick wall that's going up. And so he, he does have a full-time job and he does it, you know, when he has time to dedicate to that. But when he does have time, we get there and, and if it's during the week, we'll have park staff help him out with that project. And so we're, our goal is to get that completed by April of 2022 because that's when the 50-year anniversary is of, of those officers unfortunately losing their lives. So we're going to try to revamp that, that park, renovate it. But currently, for the fountain itself, we're, we're getting budget numbers together to try to figure out, you know, what we can afford for renovating the fountain itself, so.
Like I say, it was submitted to me, so, but what they were wanting to know, so thank you for the input.
I, I think, you know, in recognition of the volunteer work, both of the Parks Department and the Police Department and the Parks and Rec staff, I think it looks a lot better. You know, it really looked trashy there for a while. It's been badly neglected and I think it looks much, much better. There still is a lot of work to be done, but I appreciate the volunteers that are certainly helping to do that and look forward to that celebration on April 22nd when we can have the families of the police officers here in town and we can again recognize those families for the individuals that were, were lost here in Harrisonville, so. You know, when, when we were in the middle of COVID, a lot of us had people that were close to us that were experiencing COVID. And one of those individuals is right here in the room now and that was Mr. Minnick. And I don't know if you've noticed, but he pointed out to me this evening, he is oxygenless less.
He's nine months old and I can't tell you how glad I am to be there.
Glad you're here.
We are glad you're with us and we're glad that that tank is gone. I want to thank Chief Hofer. Chief, if you would just step through the door for a moment, just so that, there you go. I just, we want to thank you for the leadership that you brought in creating the Harrisonville Carers Coalition. You know, hearing the successes of that organization and the partnerships that support its mission and getting the young people involved and the great things that you have done. I just think that this board wants to recognize you personally for that. So thank you very much. I want to let the board and staff know that I'll be giving the State of the City address at the Chamber Luncheon on the 20th, that's this Thursday. And I'm also going to do it a couple of other times at some civic groups here in town. But I think it's important for the community to hear just about all the exciting things that are going on in our city. I can't tell you how proud I am to be a part of this board and to be a part of a group of people that care about the city and they're future forward thinkers. So thank you, Board, for that. So May the 20th, that's this Thursday, it'll be at the Community Center. And then also, we want to let the public know, those of you that are watching tonight, that we will be opening these council chambers back up to the general public effective of our next meeting in June. We're excited to be able to do that. We have lightened our mask requirement. You may wear masks if you choose, but you're not required to wear a mask here. We will still be social distancing. You'll notice that the chairs are marked when you arrive, so please respect that. But we are excited. I know I heard some members of the board say tonight, it's nice to see each other's faces again. And so we're excited to welcome the public back to these council chambers effective in June. And that is all I have. I would entertain a motion to adjourn this session and move into our work session, so.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Mm-hmm.
Second?
I have a motion from Alderman Franklin with a second from Alderman Milner to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. We'll take about a five-minute break.